Take a deep breath for my reading of the preamble. Okay, we are live. So at 7 o'clock PM, I will call a meeting of the Lunenburg Select Board to order. This is the Select Board meeting of Tuesday, April 27, 2021. In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel. The town of Lunenburg, in response to the COVID-19 pandemic, is currently following the guidance from the Lunenburg Board of Health, the Massachusetts Department of Public Health, and the CDC regarding the virus and steps communities can take to prevent its spread. All town facilities are open. Are we open full time yet, Madam Town Manager? Or still limited hours?
Still limited hours this week. We're looking to possibly-
I want to steal your thunder if you're going to announce it. So we're still open limited hours and by appointment after hours. In accordance with the Governor's order, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law Chapter 30A, Section 20, all public meetings are being conducted remotely. This meeting will be broadcast live through the local access cable, on Facebook Live, on the Public Access Facebook page, and will be able to be found on the Lunenburg Access YouTube channel within 24 hours after its conclusion. If you would like to participate in the meeting and own a computer, a smartphone, or a tablet, you can do so by using the Zoom application. Tonight's webinar ID for Zoom is 909-174-0347. If you would like to participate but don't have one of those devices, you can do so by phone by dialing in 888-475-4499. And again, the webinar ID is 909-174-0347. I ask any people who are listening in and wish to participate via phone or smart device, if you have the Zoom application, acquaint yourself with the Raise Your Hand feature, which is under Reactions, which is usually at the bottom of your screen. And if you're on the phone and you wish to raise your hand, you can do so by dialing *9. I will see that your hand is raised, and I will call on you at the appropriate time. The agenda we go through tonight lists all the topics which may be discussed at the meeting and are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair. Votes may be taken as a result of these discussions. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by the open meeting law. Let's do a call to order. So just for whether you are present, Mr. Marino.
Here.
Ms. Adams.
Here.
Mr. Dwyer.
Here.
Mr. Jeffries.
Here.
And I am here, Tom Alonso, Chair. Madam Town Manager, are you present?
Present.
Okay, all the formalities taken care of. One more formality. I hand it over to Ms. Adams for the flag and leading us in the pledge, please.
Okay, thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Welcome.
I will open tonight's meeting and see if there's any public comment from the board this evening. No public comment from the board. Okay, I will ask if there's a public comment from the public. I see a hand raised. I will ask to unmute. Mr. Rossi, you can identify yourself, and you are on the air.
Hi, so I'm gonna read a short update on caring for kids. So hello neighbors, I am Ethan Rossi from San Frisian Northwood Road. You may remember, I spoke two weeks ago at this meeting about my Black Book Community Service Project. I wanted to take a minute and say thank you to everyone who has supported my Black Book Community Service Project, caring for kids by donating items for sick children in the hospital. I have so much stuff in one of our guest rooms. I'm having to find other places to store stuff. You guys are all awesome. I'll be running this project for two more weeks. I'll be looking to schedule time to deliver supplies to the hospital this third week of May. I can still use your help. You can find the specific list of items to donate by visiting my Facebook page, facebook.com/caringforkids21, and that's caring spelled with a K. You can also learn more about my project there. Just remember, if you purchase something to donate, your donations can be shipped to me directly. Don't check out, or you can drop them off at the Boys and Girls Club of Lunenburg at Frisian Memorial Drive in Lunenburg. Thank you.
Thank you, Ethan, and good luck. I'm glad you're having good success, and I wish you continued success, and hopefully more people will get the message out. Thanks for all you're doing.
Thank you.
Any other public comment from the public? Seeing none. Announcements. Well, the big announcement, of course, is this Saturday is the annual town meeting. Lunenburg Middle School, High School Auditorium starts at 9:00. Check-in will open, I don't know, probably at 8:00. There'll be full COVID protocol as there was in the prior two meetings, special meeting and the last annual meeting. So that should all be in your warrant that got mailed to everybody, every taxpayer's home. So again, a lot of items to be discussed, including, you know, from budget to zoning rules to citizen petitions, a whole bunch of things. I encourage people to come out. It really is the truest form of democracy and an open town meeting, so everybody who is a registered voter gets a vote there and gets to speak if they would like, so. I just encourage everybody just to come by there. Madam Town Manager, do you have any announcements?
That was the one I was going to announce as well, so. No other ones.
Appointments. Look at this, Karen, right on time, almost. Within a minute, we have fiscal year '21 Third Quarter Financial Report by Karen Broschew, our Finance Director. Let me unmute you.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Can you hear me? Good!
The microphone is better than the one in your office.
It's working good?
Yes, it is.
All right, that's what I like to hear. I moved it around, so I think that might have something to do with it. I think it was kind of, my laptop was kind of stuffed in a corner and it made it harder to hear. But anyway, good evening, everybody. I'm here to tell you about the third quarter revenues and expenditures for FY21 and where we stand right now. What I can tell you is, on the revenue side, to date, we have collected $34,340,103, or 79% of our FY21 estimates through March 31st. As you know, the revenues are broken up into different categories. One of the categories is local receipts. Our local receipt estimate for FY21 is $3,65,991, and to date, we have received 91% of that estimate. It's broken down into several categories within the local receipt estimate. I can give you a little summary of what those budget-to-actual numbers are. Fines and forfeits, the budget is $27,213, and to date, we've collected $9,335, or 34% of the estimate. We also have other excise, which is our local option meals tax. The estimate for that is $100,980, and through the third quarter, we've collected $92,273 of that estimate, or 91%, which is good because with everything going on with the virus, we were thinking that we may not meet that estimate in FY21, and we actually have one quarterly payment left for the year and are at 91%. Departmental revenues for the schools was budgeted at $60,207, and to date, we've collected $51,978, or 86% of the estimate. Payment in lieu of taxes, the budget is $1,0648, and we've collected $2,285. Our fee estimate was $164,267, and we've collected 94%, or $155,000 of that estimate. Licenses and permits, the budgeted amount was $331,188, and we've collected $262,586, or 79% of the estimate. We've also received $47,182 in rollback taxes, which we typically don't budget because we don't know whether we will receive anything in that category or not. So that's to the positive for sure. Departmental revenue other, which is basically our ambulance receipts, the estimate for that is $262,600, and we've received $190,883, or 73% of the estimate. Investment income, the estimate is $62,935, and to date, we have only received $26,231. And this is one of the categories within the local receipt estimates that we are seeing a decline over what was estimated, and it's due to the fact that our, the interest earned on the funds that we have invested has decreased significantly with everything that was going on with the pandemic. So we were seeing interest rates of about 1.5% on our investments, on our daily investments, and we're now seeing about a half of a percent. Departmental revenue cemeteries, that number is budgeted at $4,100, and we've received $3,700 of that amount. Motor vehicle excise, which is the biggest category in our local receipt estimate, the budgeted amount was $1,671,640, and to, through the month of March, we've received $1,537,467, which is 91% of the estimate. We also have a category for special assessments, which is basically our trailer park fees that are made, that are paid by the mobile home parks that we have in town. That number was budgeted at $11,844, and we've received $11,568. A few more categories. Penalties and interest on taxes, the estimate was $154,670. To date, we've received $196,281, so that estimate is about 25% over what we had anticipated. And the final category is miscellaneous nonrecurring revenue, which is basically made up of our Meadowwoods Betterment and any supplemental taxes that we may receive. That number is budgeted at $212,698, and to date, we've received $209,133, or 98%. So overall, in the local receipt category, we have collected 91% of our estimated revenues, and the amount left to collect on what we had anticipated is $277,065. And just as a point of reference, I looked at the last quarter of collections on local receipts in FY20, and the amount that we received in the final quarter of FY20 under local receipts was $749,174. And I have been looking at the, at the actual collections that we've received in all revenue categories in FY20 versus FY21, and everything seems to be trending higher with the, with the exception of a few of the categories like investment income. So I, I would imagine, or I would at least assume that we would, we would exceed our local receipt estimate by a pretty significant amount of money, probably in the range of about $500,000. I wouldn't hold me to that, but I think that that's about what it would probably be. The next revenue category is taxes, and that's basically our personal property and real estate tax collections. The amount that was budgeted for that was $28,776,249. To date, we've collected 76% of that estimate. And the other piece of this revenue that we don't budget but we have received is tax lien revenue. We've received $186,181 in tax lien revenue. So overall, our tax revenue collections are at 77% of what was estimated through the end of March. Our state aid category, our cherry sheet estimate is $9,109,747, and that's net of school choice and library state aid, which is set aside for use by the school and the library, and to date, we've received 78% of our state aid estimate. On the expenditure side, for FY21, our budget is $43,316,403. To date, we have expended and/or encumbered $30,252,405, which is 70% of our budgeted expenditures through the end of March. On the expenditure side, a few things I just would like to point out is, to date, there has been no draw on our reserve fund, and the amount budgeted in that category is $75,000. We do have a small deficit in our injury leave appropriation, and that was due to the fact that we had two call firefighters who were injured on duty. We are receiving partial reimbursement for those costs through our insurance company, and any deficits that remain in that appropriation at the end of the year should be eliminated through the 4433B transfers that we're allowed to do under Mass General laws. Snow removal, based on actual expenditures to date, the deficit in that account is $40 million, I mean, 40 million, that would be horrible, $40,083. And again, this deficit can be eliminated also with the 4433B transfers that we're allowed to do at year-end through transfers from existing appropriations. And the final one that I just wanted to point out is that we will have a surplus in our health insurance appropriation of approximately $275,000 at year-end. And this is due to the fact that at the time when the budgets are put together, we anticipate either new employees or the amounts that are budgeted for the employees that we believe will come on is budgeted at what the highest potential cost could be, and it doesn't always happen that way. And then, of course, there's changes in enrollment throughout the year, and there are changes in our senior plans throughout the year. So as of right now, it looks like we'll have a surplus in that account of about $275,000. That would be one of the accounts that we could use to eliminate any of the potential deficits that we would have, and any surplus that would remain in that account at the end of the year would become, would, would close out and become part of our certified free cash. All the other expenditures within the appropriations are, are where they should be at this point in time. And if you saw any of the appropriations that look like they've spent more than the 75% that's largely due to the fact that departments open up blanket purchase orders, so the funds are encumbered and not available in the appropriation and just used throughout the year. So overall, I did mention this to the Finance Committee the other night. I, I would think that we would see a free cash that is equivalent to what we've seen in the past few years once I submit the balance sheet to the state and get the free cash certified. And that's all I have.
Anybody have any questions for the Finance Director? Ms. Adams?
I would just say thank you, and I do like being at the front of the agenda.
I do like being at the front of the agenda, although I'll probably hang around.
For whatever reason, I feel like I miss looking out at the, you know, audience and being in Town Hall, but it was always so painful. It happened to the chief too, when somebody was late on the agenda and we had a meeting, so.
It's okay, because usually when I am there, it's interesting to hear what's going on other than what I have to discuss, so.
Well, you're interesting too. Thank you.
I think after the glowing report that Powers and Sullivan gave you, we really owed it to you to put you at the beginning, so.
Oh, well, thank you very much.
Yes, a very, thank you for the report, a very excellent report. I'm glad to hear we're in a good position again.
We have been over the years. We're, we're financially sound compared to several communities that I, I talk with, with my colleagues. The town of Lunenburg's very financially sound, so.
That's excellent.
We're in a good place.
Good, let's keep it there. All right, if nobody has any other questions, we will go on in the agenda. So we have interviews, appointments, reappointments, resignations. So we have Select Board appointments to the Board of Registars, which are three-year term that runs from April 1st to March 31st. So I guess we're a little bit late in these, but, but they do require us to get information back from the town Republican and Democratic Parties, of which I see we've received one. So I guess one out of two ain't bad, I think. So we'll see. Let's, now, I got an email that Ms. Kelly is not able to join us tonight. Is that correct?
Correct. She had a last minute, something come up for work, I believe, that she couldn't make it.
Okay. Now, there's, there are rules about how we have to nominate these, and the most important, and they're in a Google Drive under Mass General Law Chapter 51, Section 15. And my understanding is that we, as the Select Board, have to appoint people from a list that was submitted by the Town Committee. Is that correct? So we can't choose somebody not on the list, especially if a list is given, I would assume. So it says if the list of the, has not been given within 45 days after notification, then they can appoint without reference to the list. So we are bound to the list if one was submitted. Am I reading that correctly?
Yes.
So with that being said, there are three people that are on for interviews, only two of which, on the Republican nominees, only two that are not mentioned by the, the Town Committee. And that would be Ms. Kelly and Ms. Rudd. I want to make sure everybody's following me, so I don't do anything that's not correct here. Does everybody concur that that's what the list says to choose from?
Yes.
Okay, because I don't want to slight, I don't want to slight Ms. Anderson, who was put in her name to do this, but was not on the list. And again, I think these, the list from the town party has been submitted in the appropriate time. So we are bound to choose somebody from one of those two names on their list. So that being said, unless somebody objects, we are going to interview Ms. Rudd, who I believe is on the line, on, on the meeting with us here. Now, when do we have to, I mean, and then we can decide as a board, did, did Ms. Kelly say that she wants to reschedule this? Or, and what's the board's appetite to do that? I mean?
She did not indicate, but there was no response after that last email.
When was that last email sent?
Just today. She, she's obviously, I think she's a Realtor, and she's caught doing some kind of closing, it seems, from an email she sent to us this afternoon. Well, while I'll let everybody mull it over, in the meantime, I will ask Ms. Rudd to unmute here.
Oh, correct me if I'm wrong. I don't see a list from the Democratic Party, just the Republican Party.
They did not submit a list. Yes, that is correct. So from the Democratic side, having no list, we can choose, we can interview whomever. We don't, we're not bound by their list because there is no list.
Right. And what's, what's, Mrs. Anderson, what, what party is she representing?
She's Republican.
Okay.
So, okay, so Ms. Rudd, are you with us? If you can hear me, Ms. Rudd, I, we cannot hear you, although you do not appear to be muted. All right, looks like we are having technical difficulties.
She's having trouble with her mic?
Yeah, I see that. You may want to quit out of the application and rejoin the meeting, and we will wait for you.
Okay.
Heard her then. You know, we just heard.
Yeah, did, we, we may have just heard you.
Did you hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
Oh, gosh, maybe it's just turned down so low.
All right.
I'm sorry about that. I don't know where my face is. I don't know where the picture is. But anyway, I, I was interested in, in supporting the election process, and my name was put forward as a Republican candidate. I'm not sure what to offer. I have a, you know, background in data and office support and just putting together information and data. I'm just really good with information.
Okay.
So I, I'm not, I'm not sure. I'm a, you know, I'm a citizen in good standing. I've lived here for over 30 years. I don't know.
Okay, have you, have you ever worked in an election, or do you, do you know someone who's worked in an election? Do you know what was, what the responsibilities of the-
I, I honestly was just happy to, to like work voting day, but then I was put forward to, to do more. And I understand there's three people that want two positions, so if the other two are already experienced and want it, that's fine. I don't mind working on poll day. But if, you know, I'm happy to learn. It's just kind of new to me.
Okay, Ms. Adams.
Sure, sorry.
To the board.
Um, I guess then maybe we reach out and try to have the other two women join us or, or respond to whether or not they're interested. In which case then, if they are not, is, do you want to be nominated at a future meeting? Is that sort of where you're at?
I, yeah, I guess, yeah, I want to be involved, for sure. I've, I haven't worked in the voting process before, but it's, it's exciting these days, so I thought I would, I would join in, so.
Yeah, I think the excitement is not the good part of why it's in the news a lot these days, so hopefully it'll be less exciting.
It, it's good. It, it's a, it's a process that's calling for many eyes, and I am a detailed person, so I thought I could, I could help.
That's excellent. Anybody else have any questions from the board? For Ms. Rudd?
No.
As we always say, I want to thank you for coming forward and volunteering to do this. I mean, Board of Registars, very important job for a very important event that happens, you know, at least once a year in Lunenburg, and many, every, on even years, twice a year because of the state elections. So, yeah, I'm glad you're, you're stepping forward and offering to do it.
That's good. I don't know what the next step, step is.
Well, our next step is if we're gonna, there, there's one other person we need to see if she wants to, who I, I just indicated before we unmuted you, who was nominated by the Republican Town Committee and had it last minute because of professional scheduling conflict, couldn't be here, so. So we're gonna see if she can be here next week, and we'll make the appointment then. Madam Town Manager, there's no, we don't have to appoint this evening, right?
No.
Okay. So we're just gonna see, we're just gonna offer the courtesy, uh, if, if Ms. Kelly can come by and interview next Tuesday.
Okay, sounds good.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so that's the only one from the Republican side that we need to extend to, because again, Ms. Anderson was not on the Republican list. Uh, on the Democratic list, we have a, an incumbent, Karen Kemp of Burridge Street, who has indicated in a letter that she would like to be considered, um, for the Democratic side, and she's been longstanding Board of Registrar member. So unless anybody, I, I haven't heard of anybody else wanting to do it, and we've reached out, as required, to the Democratic Town Committee Chair, who receives, acknowledged that they received it, but didn't provide any feedback. So I'm more than happy to entertain a motion for Ms. Kemp to continue her work on Board of Registars.
Yeah, I would, I would move to appoint Ms. Kemp.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Ms. Adams?
Aye.
Mr. Marino?
Aye.
Mr. Dwyer?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffries?
Aye.
An aye from me. So we will let Ms. Kemp know that she can go and get sworn in again, and next week we'll try to reschedule. And if we, uh, I don't know if you or I should, should respond back to Ms. Anderson and just let her know that because, you know, we're bound, we're bound by the list given to us. So it's not like we didn't want to interview her, but we have to choose from a list if it's provided.
I can do that.
Okay. Current business, approval of minutes. So we have, uh, five sets of minutes, March 16th, March 30th, April 1st, April 6th, April 13th. Before we mention these, I want to take the opportunity to, uh, you know, to at least extol the virtues of an, an unseen hero or heroine, and that I think Elaine Peterson is doing an incredible job keeping up with these minutes. The minutes are very excellent minutes in that they're precise in what they cover, without being, you know, like it's some, you know, screenplay dialogue of what everybody particularly said. They're on time, uh, they're clear, they're easy to read, so I want to thank us for being up to date, that we're already approving minutes from April, and that it should be the norm, hasn't been the norm for years, so I want to thank her and all her efforts. That being said, I would, unless anybody has any, uh, changes or modifications I'd like to made in any of those, we can, or, and unless there's any objection, we can take them all as one bundle, uh, all of them in one vote.
Sure, I make a motion that we approve the minutes of March 16th, March 30th, April 1st, April 6th, and April 13th.
Go to second.
Second.
Any further discussion?
I just wanted to contribute to your comment, uh, Mr. Alonso. I did call Elaine last week and, and expressed the same, that I appreciated her minutes and the quality of, of the work, so I think that, uh, she does at least have some understanding that, that we, we do appreciate it. And I'm sure she's gonna watch this meeting and hear us tell her, so, thank you.
Hopefully she puts that comment in the meeting. All right, all those in favor, Ms. Adams?
Aye.
Mr. Marino?
Aye.
Mr. Dwyer?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffries?
Aye.
And an aye from me. Warrants. Okay, we, uh, last week I signed the following warrants. We had an accounts payable warrant in the amount of $1,131,778.51. Uh, another smaller accounts payable warrant in the amount of $2,540.97. A payroll deduction warrant in the amount of $567,545.31. And a payroll warrant in the amount of $831,881.46. Okay. Action items. So there was, there was one that came up, uh, I know that, I know that Katie saw it too, but it came up in, uh, social media asking, oh.
Oh, you're stealing my action item, Chairman Alonso. I said I.
Stealing an action item. I'm just reporting, go ahead. I just read it, I just read it in the, uh, well, not just read it, but go ahead. I'll hand it over to you.
Sure, I was communicating with a citizen on Facebook, if this is the same one, and, um, they inquired about, um, arrows being painted, um, at the Walmart intersection, which is one of my favorite broken records, which we have slowly repaired. Um, uh, they were requesting a right turn arrow westbound on 2A at Walmart. So we've added, you know, we fixed the lines in, in the double area, um, going up towards Lunenburg by Asian Imperial, and of course, we updated the traffic signals, but the, uh, right turn arrow westbound on 2A, um, uh, has not been painted. And when I checked it out today, um, other painting could be updated. Um, so, yeah, so that was, uh, one of our Facebook action items, and, um, I'll segue into the other one from a couple of weeks ago, um, and this is to the town manager. People were inquiring, um, if in the future with trash, we could, um, go towards a sticker program that some communities use and stay away from the, um, trash bags altogether, in the sense that some people feel the redundancy of putting their kitchen trash bag into a second larger trash bag, and they feel it would be more environmentally friendly to adhere stickers. I don't know much about the topic, but I thought I would pose the question, since we're looking into, um, new contracts, um, to begin with.
I can answer both, limited on the second issue. Um, but the first issue, actually, the police chief earlier this month had reached out to Mass DOT about that, that issue of, um, painting, having a, um, painted right turn sign in that lane, as well as signage. Um, and he followed up on that request to Mass DOT yesterday. So, um, when I talked to him today, he said if he didn't hear, he'd be calling them, so.
Awesome.
And just so people are aware, because 2A is a state road, we don't have the luxury of just doing it ourselves. So it has to come from the state, which is why there's all these iterations of, did you do it yet? Did you do it yet? Did you do it yet? We really want you to do it, so.
Correct. Um, regarding the sticker program, I think that would take, um, significant amount of research to, to look into the benefits and costs and, um, moving in that direction. With a new upcoming contract with a new vendor, um, we were trying to work it simultaneously, that the length of the contract with the trash collector for curbside would coincide with our bag vendor. It just naturally made sense to make them the same, same term, uh, contract, so. Yeah, it would take a significant amount of research and to see the costs and, um, what that would look like. I know it was done in the past, right?
I know one of the issues that was discussed when this whole program was adopted with stickers, well, there were two. One is that, you know, people, stickers not sticking on for some reason, or coming off, or, I mean, but, but the more important one was, anything you do on printers, unless you do it on some kind of special paper, would be, because of the quality of home printers now, you could probably, you, you may be able to, you know, forge them and print your own, which is what we're trying to avoid. And the people who are picking it up might not know, whereas nobody's gonna go out and print their own garbage bags, so I think that was one. I don't know how big a part it played, but I know it was part of the discussion.
Those are good points here.
Well, we should reinvest it and reinvestigate it and at least have the discussion again. Okay, anybody else with any action file issues? Mr. Jeffries?
Yeah, I have two, and these are, uh, kind of previous action items, and, and I, there's, it's morally mostly comments. So previously, you know, last year, we talked about the cemeteries and the need for, uh, cemeteries to be better maintained. And, uh, I, so I want to just report as a follow-up, that the condition of the cemeteries is excellent. Um, I think that, you know, the message has been communicated, uh, and, and the result is, uh, being noticed, commented on by many members of our community, um, here in town, and, and really, it's, uh, I think a dignified, uh, contribution to, um, those who, who go to the cemeteries to visit their loved ones. So thank you very much, Heather, for your follow-up on that one, uh, and ensuring that that was remedied. And then the second was, uh, you know, I, I felt like a broken record when I talk about cleaning up the sides of the roads. Um, but there has been a huge movement, uh, over the last month, thanks hopefully to Earth Day in part, to help clean up the sides of the road. So I also want to thank Heather and our DPW Director for the efforts in making those beds available, as well as thanking the high school kids, um, Lions Club, and many members of our community who've, uh, come out to help pick up some of the trash and debris that flies around the road. So thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. It was actually part of my town manager report to, to thank everyone in the community that came for this last week. All the volunteers, including the Boys and Girls Club, they, um, helped, I understand, so it's much appreciated.
So it's going around. Everybody's stealing everybody else's stories supposedly tonight, so. All right. Anyway, I, I know that, you know, I, there's a, um, Councilor LaLarge in Pittsburgh who posts a lot, a lot of you may know her, and she's been really hosting and posting a lot about cleanups in, in Pittsburgh, and, uh, I'm glad that it, all over, they're doing them, and they're really important. It's, it's unfortunate that we live in a, a place where you have to pick up after other people. Uh, some people who are intentionally throwing things away, you know, sometimes it happens by accident, something blows out the window, I understand that. But the amount of things that are out there are not unintentional. So I, I thank you to everybody as well for doing that and organizing. I know that Lions Club has tried now three weekends in a row to organize something for the gazebo, and the weather has not cooperated. So I think it's supposed to be this Sunday, uh, May 2nd, if you're available, I think at nine o'clock, so. Committee reports, anybody with any committee reports? Mr. Jeffries?
All right, I have three. So, uh, we have a in-town Memorial Day Committee. It's kind of an ad hoc committee, uh, that has been going well. We have a meeting coming up tomorrow evening, um, at, uh, five, I believe it's at 5:30. I'll have to double check that, actually.
Yeah, please send that out, because I have not received that, by the way.
Yeah, I will double check that and send that out. Um, so, you know, program for Memorial Day is coming together, and we're looking at a live, uh, for there to be a live event, and, uh, you know, many members of the community have stepped up to assist, uh, with this. So if anyone has any, uh, right now, we have the schools that are looking to participate, the police and fire department, uh, you know, members of the community will be speaking. We also have Senator Cronin, uh, will be providing, um, some remarks, as well as Mr. Alonso. So, you know, some things are still need to be worked out, but, uh, that will keep moving forward. The library trustees also met, um, and, and they had a, you know, great meeting. As always, they're really a model board, I think. If you haven't watched the library trustees meet, uh, one thing that, that they discussed at their last meeting um, was, you know, they're always in this process of self-evaluation, in terms of how well they work together as members of a board. Um, and part of their strategy, uh, is every, you know, they create long-term visions for how the library can move forward, and then, you know, built into that process are these kind of self-evaluations. So, uh, the library is, is everything there is going well. They're looking to move to have, uh, open hours that mirrors town halls' hours of 10 to 2, and they're looking to make that change the first week of May, but more information on that will be forthcoming. And TCP Design Committee. Uh, so the TCP Design Committee also met, um, between our last meeting and now. And the key things that we talked about was really just strategy about, um, how the presentation at town meeting will go. Uh, and so Mr. Blatt, uh, put that forward, and we did review it. We had a couple of members of the community, uh, attend that meeting as well. And we did get in the interim and, uh, a, a cost estimate for what the warrant article about, uh, coming up with that design will be. So that number came in at, uh, $54,000, and that would be the, what the TCP Design Committee is requesting, uh, which is to look at the site and, uh, develop a plan for what it would cost to build a new building, rather than rehabbing the current building. And again, that's predicated on the fact that the per square foot cost is, uh, for the rehab is, is much, is higher than what a new build typically costs. Uh, so that number just came through. I will be at the Finance Committee meeting tomorrow to represent the TCP Design Committee and present that number to them. Uh, and again, that was $54,000. And that's what I have.
Is, is the Finance Committee meeting tomorrow?
I'm sorry, Thursday.
Okay, Thursday.
Yep. And are there any other questions?
Well, we're gonna probably talk about that, uh, when we get to the next old business. We'll, we'll talk about the TCP under the warrant articles, so. Ms. Adams? Oh, hold on.
Okay, sorry about that. My dishwasher's in that one loud base. Um, uh, just the updates of, um, the conservation meeting. They had their, um, public hearing to hear about, um, hunting and firearms on, um, town property, and they didn't take a vote on their land use regulations. So I know a lot of people have been following along with that, and I'm sure it'll be discussed more at town meeting, um, but they didn't make, um, a formal vote on that yet. And then, um, although not, um, you know, quasi municipal, but been following along with the water district, and we've updated, um, on the past, the water district themselves had voted no to expanding the water district, but at their more recent meeting, the water commissioners, uh, voted three to zero, um, not to expand water to Howard Street. So just as an update on that, it stands as, uh, no expansion at this time.
Thank you. I would, just one clarification. The Conservation Commission did take a vote on their policies, but it was tied 3-3, so nobody, so they're gonna be revoting it when they have a full board, uh, after town meeting.
Correct, yes. They didn't come to a conclusion on the land use reg.
They did take a vote. It was just tied.
Okay.
And it was very confusing about what they were voting on, and people on social media were disputing what they were voting on, and so I had to listen to it another two times, that, that spot of the meeting, so.
Correct. They did not change their land use regulations. They did not take that vote to change.
Okay. All right, so, anybody else? Let's go to old, old business. So let's just take these items in item number one, one at a time. So let's go to the budget. Madam Town Manager, do you have a, you have a couple of budget items to talk to us about? Is that correct?
Yes, and I'll kind of combine it with the, the town meeting warrant articles as well, because they're all, uh, budget related.
Do you want these, do you want this on the screen?
Um, please. Yeah, that'd probably be easier.
All right. Now that I'm coming more prepared to show these on the screen, just as we're coming out of the pandemic, so. All right, where is that article? There.
Okay, this is, um, the adjustment worksheet. Just shows the breakdown of the changes to the budget. So I'll start with, um, what is Article 3, the prior year expenses. I learned today from the Finance Director that, um, there's an additional prior year expense totaling $500. So that brings the total of the prior year expense to $645. Uh, so you'll see that, um, additional use of free cash on the top portion of the revenues for $500 towards that, um, prior year expense.
Second line from the bottom, is that it? This one?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, the, um, not showing up on here because. Uh the um not showing up on here because they're gonna be passed over. Articles eighteen and nineteen, which were for the clerical um to cover the first year's cost of the clerical bargaining agreement and the fire unions bargaining agreement, which is Article eighteen and nineteen respectively. Those will be passed over. The um omnibus budget, uh there is changes to that due to the bids bid we received for trash, our solid waste and recycling program cost, which is in the operating budget side. That um will require an additional hundred and five thousand, one hundred dollars. And that you'll see reflected on the bottom under expenditures. Very last line. And um so the budget, the preliminary budget included a fifteen percent estimate. But there was actually unappropriated tax revenue um in the amount of around thirty-nine thousand that would allow for up to a thirty-four percent increase in that cost of that contract. But it came in um around sixty-six percent higher. So um my recommendation is to adjust the capital plan funding sources. So to increase the free cash amount towards capital, reduce the reason appropriate amount, which would be then be fall under the solid waste. Um additional costs needed. So you'll see that amount of the sixty-five thousand to sixteen up top under um that's the additional amount that will be needed towards capital. And it will be the same bottom line for the capital plan. Uh it's just changing the source of funds. The um so that covers both the omnibus budget and the capital plan. Article twenty-six, as selectman Jeffries indicated, we received the cost estimate for the TCP additional design services were fifty-four thousand. That's reflected on the the top and bottom uh showing use of free cash for for that article. Um we had previously already discussed the thirty thousand towards the landscape cost for thirty schools street. So that's reflected as well. And those are all the um budget and warrant article updates. Um I did learn that the petitioner for Article thirty is withdrawing uh their request.
That was the sewer district article, right?
Yes.
Okay.
So um but they'll have to be the ones to make that motion on town meeting floor. So we will not be including that in the consent calendar.
Excellent. Any questions for the town manager on this? What is the likelihood of change in this? Did we? We didn't vote on the budget because it wasn't wasn't completed, right?
Uh no, the budget was voted on, so it will have to be um revoted um as far as um and the prior year expense was revoked as was voted as well. So that will have to be revoked.
Alright, so we'll have to do that in a second. We should do that tonight. The only question I had that I brought to the town manager's attention, I don't have any problem with the fifty-four thousand for the TCP additional design. We want to, I think, my eye for one is one vote, want to keep this project going. But I I was concerned in the document that was sent that it included one meeting with the TCP design. I don't know how you design a whole new building and have one meeting with the design committee. That makes no sense to me at all. So while I I'm fine with the appropriation, I think that the definition of what's concluded in there needs to be really refined and gone over. So it makes more sense, logical sense to me.
Yeah, I agree with you on that, Mr. Alonso. Uh I think that, you know, the the TCP Design Committee has not had the chance to review this estimate uh because the number, you know, just came in. But I think that that's uh stood out to me as well. I've heard from another member that that stood out to them too. Um so you know, I think that there's gonna be the need to do a little bit more refining um with them, but I think that, you know, we can move forward with the cost.
Okay. Ms. Adams.
Thank you. Um in regards to the um fifty-four thousand and being labeled as the TCP additional design services, I think there's a bit of a misnomer. Is there a better name we could put that? Because doesn't it involve the demolition of the building and a completely new build? Um so calling it the TCP additional design to me feels like it's enhancing something to do with the TCP project when actually it's it's a very different project.
Well, we're gonna explain what the money is for. So the label is here for our edification and it's a continuation of the same design committee. So and it's on the TCP property. It's not.
Just want to make sure that people understand that we're not having the engineers do additional designs on the TCP, that it's actually calling for the demolition of the building that's there, correct? Replaced by a brand new fifty thousand square foot building. So that people understand the pivot there. I think it's important that we uh have a good label for what is being asked for.
I think. Mr. Jeffries.
I think that you you bring up a a point about this, you know, I think that that right now, the the going name for the building and the land area is TCP design. You know, that's what we've we're working with. I think that based on the communications that have gone out to people in the community, that everyone understands that we're talking about that land. And you know, when we discuss this at town meeting, if we can, if we remember, the article right before this is the presentation from the TCP Design Committee to lay out where we're where we're at and the reason why we're asking the town for additional funds to uh look into this alternative. Um but I think that everyone in attendance will, it will be crystal clear to everyone there what we're talking about and and why we're talking about it. But there will be no confusion that we're that the request is to demolish the existing building and build something new.
And i- if I remember correctly, in the town meeting article is actually looking for um permission to change the charge of the group because this ask for this additional project is outside of the scope of what the charge is. Is that correct?
That's correct. So there there also is a request to do an and or. You know, I think that some people in the community have, you know, raised concerns about is this the most appropriate site? But you know, I in my own work, I've done an overlay of of the current dimensions of the center of town of the primary area. And I it's certainly my intention to, as a member of the committee, to uh move forward with the design that could work on either location uh or to uh eliminate the possibility of of the of using the uh current lot for the primary school um based on the needs for parking. So that's something that we realize is gonna be an issue. There's a huge parking need for for the building. I believe we're at about a hundred and sixty-six spaces. It's gonna be difficult to do that at the current lot. But I think that the we I think that we as members understand that there is another question out there. And so as we move forward, uh you know, I think it's my expectation that we will do so in a way that could be a viable plan somewhere else.
Thank you.
Uh just uh if you if you take back to the committee, whoever is doing the presentation, I would urge them at where it is in the meeting to make note of that and make the, I mean, we I don't want to encourage something that's less than informative, but I want to encourage something that's less, not not more than needed. Let's put it that way. I'll try to be try to delicate in this. We want to make sure that the presentation is precise and doesn't kind of meander and expect people to sit through forty-five minutes of a presentation. So.
I we we reviewed it, uh Mr. Alonso. I think that the town should expect about a fifteen fifteen minute um presentation, ten to fifteen minute presentation. And then there, I expect that there will be a lot of questions.
Sure. If you have other questions, they're fine. Okay, thank you. Okay, um anybody have any other questions about the budget as presented by the town manager? So let's take the articles, Madam Town Manager, that were affected by this and let's revoke them. Uh I don't have the warrant in front of me, so if you tell me which one it is.
Article three is the prior year expense article. So the revised amount is six hundred and forty-five dollars.
So I entertain a motion regarding paying six hundred, paying the six hundred plus dollars that just was read for a prior town, a prior year's expense.
I move to recommend approval.
So a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, Ms. Adams?
Aye.
Mr. Marino?
Aye.
Mr. Dwyer?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffries?
Aye.
Aye for me. I guess I could go to the last meeting and look at the articles. Two meetings ago, when was there? Much. It's an election law warrant articles. There we go. Alright. So which one's next?
Uh let's uh capital because it's changing the uh initial amounts that were.
Yeah, so what I'm just trying to find it.
Article five.
Five, there we go.
So I'll read the revised amounts and sources. Six hundred and eighty-two thousand, five hundred and two dollars from reason appropriation. Eight hundred and four thousand, forty-one dollars from free cash and one hundred and eleven thousand, two hundred and eighty-two dollars from unexpended capital.
If there are no questions about that, I would entertain a motion on recommend recommendations on that revised article.
I move to recommend approval.
What about a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Oh, hold on. Uh okay, Ms. Adams.
Aye.
Mr. Marino?
Aye.
Mr. Dwyer?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffries?
Aye.
And I for myself.
And Article six is the omnibus budget for fiscal twenty-two.
Yep.
And with the additional amount needed for the solid waste and recycling program, the total comes to thirty-nine million, eight hundred and sixty-four thousand, eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars and eighty-one cents.
If there's no further discussion on that, I would entertain a motion about its recommendation.
I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Jeffries.
So um if the budget passes with the fifty-four thousand dollar number, how does that impact the TCP article?
It does not because that source is free cash.
Got it.
Everything is fit in. It it didn't, the the trash and recycling didn't bump out anything.
Okay. Alright.
And it still leaves um an unappropriated balance of free cash of about three hundred and eighteen thousand.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So I entertain a motion on a recommendation for this, the final budget, the the omnibus budget with the revised amount.
I recommend approval of the omnibus budget.
As read.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Ms. Adams? Mr. Marino?
Aye.
Mr. Dwyer?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffries?
Aye.
And an I for myself. Okay, what do we go down to? We go down to not sewer, not capital, solid waste disposal?
Yep, that's gonna remain um the same figure for the reason and explained at previous meeting. So the Department of Revenue is looking at that we have a minimum amount of those receipts for that program. So.
Alright, so fourteen is fine, fifteen is fine, sixteen is fine, seventeen. Well, the three articles for the union tour are gonna be passed over. Uh twenty. So twenty, did we did we approve it with the number thirty thousand?
Yes.
Okay. Twenty-one, we already did.
Twenty-six, I think would be the next one for the TCP.
Yep, twenty-six that now is fifty-four thousand dollars for design fees.
From free cash.
Yep, from free cash. Thank you. So if if there are no discussion points, I would entertain a motion on revised Article twenty-six, changing where the money is being coming from and what the actual amount is. Ms. Jeff, Ms. Adams, you have a question?
I don't know if you want to do further discussion after motions made. You mentioned discussion before. Um so I would just say um my problem with this article, um and I mentioned it previously, is um the fact that it's looking for funding specifically to ten seventy-nine Mass Ave. I think if we're at the point of um researching a um new town hall, it's prudent to um talk about locations. Um the TCP building is obviously in its current location. So if it's if it's a remodel, we can't change where it is. Um the traffic patterns around that building regarding school drop off and pickup are uh completely chaotic. Um in regards to, you know, the current activity at that space. I think if we have an opportunity to build a brand new town hall, we should look for places where it would be more well-suited to its own traffic and own parking. Um so that article, although it may be time to, you know, get an understanding of the cost of a new modern building, that may not hurt. To research it specific to that location, I think is very short sighted.
I think that I think that when the town um sets aside resources to look into rehabbing a building uh and pulls together different members of a community uh to to do that work, that sometimes you get to a result that you don't expect. And in this case, where we've gotten to a result um that that we realize that the cost to rehab a building is is simply more than the typical cost to build something new. Um that's and I and that point has given all members of the TCP Design Committee some pause. I think that I can't in my good conscience come to the town to say to the town, hey, let's move forward with this. Because I think that there's a secondary question here, uh which is we need to do things that are frugal in the town's best interest. Uh I understand that a small amount, that there's a small section within town that uh strongly believes in the old primary school being the only location for this. Uh as a selectman and member of the TCP Design Committee, I can't stress the importance of uh going into a process with an open mind about where that process leads. And that when you come into a process with a set conclusion of where you need to go, then it becomes a self fulfilling prophecy. Um you know, my motive is to follow the charge. I think everyone else in the committee's motive is to follow the charge. And I respect your objections. I think maybe this would be a better discussion at uh town meeting in in which you'll have the opportunity to vocalize why you're not gonna support the art.
Ms. Adams?
Um I believe right now we're discussing our support of the article as part of our agenda. So I think it's very appropriate to discuss um discuss it now because that's exactly what we're doing. Um so as far as um uh following the charge of the committee very closely, town meeting asked for a price analysis of the remodel of the TC Passios building. We created the TC Passios Building Design Committee to follow through with town meeting ask. They asked for a price. They have not been presented the price yet. That's what's happening on Saturday. So to to start making a new plan because the committee or some members of the committee decided they don't like the outcome of the price, town meeting asked to be presented with the price. We haven't even brought in them the results of all of this work. And the group has decided that they feel there's a better option. And perhaps there is, but I think we're a little out of sync with checking back in with town meeting. And perhaps there is, but I think we're a little out of sync with checking back in with town meeting and checking back in with the town and, and, and really getting away from what town meeting asked. They asked for a price of redoing the TC Passios building. Then you kinda have to check back in with the community before the group starts looking for, you know, its own, own conclusions. Um, I think it all makes sense on the surface, but it's not necessarily going through the process correctly. And that's why I have a huge problem with this article, because it's looking for funding for engineering of a new fifty-five thousand square foot town hall at ten seventy-nine Mass Ave. With all the school campus congestion and the fact that most days we have a police detail just to get us through our pickup lines ever since the, all the kids came back together a couple weeks ago. Um, that location to me would be the worst place to build a fifty-five, or it would be, they said, a fifty thousand square foot new building. And so I think we just gotta get, get, take a step out of this TCP path. If it is not going to be the remodel of that building, then I think the elected officials and everybody's gotta go to the drawing board, whether or not it's to continue to use the TCP group or to create a new, uh, a, a new town hall group. Aside from the fact, I think the most critical um, building, I've brought this up for years, that we, we have a critical problem with the Turkey Hill School. And so I'm not sure why we're talking eighteen to twenty million dollars or so on town hall when town hall's been locked for a year. There's just a lot of theoretical problems here, and I think they're worth, they're worth mentioning. But town meeting asked for a price, they haven't even gotten it yet, and now, now we've moved on to looking for more expensive solutions, um, without checking back in. So I, I think there's a lot here that just needs to be talked about, because it's a lot of money and it's, it's a big commitment to build a building someplace, um, without talking about town center and all those other issues. I think we gotta open it back up.
Mike, before I get to you, Mr. Jeffries, my first comment would be that the article before this fifty-four thousand dollar article will be a presentation by the TCP Building Design Committee, at which point I am fairly certain that they will mention the price of what they came up with, and people can choose their reactions one way or another at that point, so they will be reporting back to town meeting as they were tasked to do. I think the next article is, eh, in advance of most people, uh, the feeling among the committee and among many people that I spoke to outside of the committee, that that price tag was very high for revamping a building that's, that's fairly old. And number, Article twenty-six gives them the opportunity, after hearing from the report of Article twenty-five, whether they wanna go forward. So they're gonna get the opportunity to hear the price and, and see whether they believe that maybe looking at a new building at that location is fine. Lastly, I would say that, you know, it's easy to say, go back to the beginning, but this has been now in the, in the, offering now seven years or eight years or so. And we already have a plan that we're pushing, or that, that we as a board unanimously proposed to go to town meeting with, on the old primary school site, and so that would put it at cross purposes. If we started saying, oh, we'll use that site for that, then they're gonna say, well, why do you want the thirty thousand dollars? So it's all to formulate a plan to go forward on multiple, uh, multiple buildings that are currently empty. So for those reasons, I'm supportive of this. Town meeting is gonna have full, a full vote of not supporting the fifty-four thousand dollars or the thirty thousand dollars for that matter, uh, if they see fit, but they will hear from the, from the building committee and have a chance to make that assessment. Mr. Jeffries?
Yeah, you know, I think that, you know, we've, I think a lot of things have been said over the last couple of years about, um, opinions about where things should be, and I, and I want Selectmen Adams to know that I've heard you. Uh, I've heard you every single time that you've brought this up in our meetings about, you know, your lack of support for the TCP, um, being a place for a future town hall. Um, I think that, you know, when, when, when we, when you speak about town hall and talk about town meeting rather, we're talking about residents of our community. And the members of the TCP Design Committee, which, you know, represents the school, represents this board, represents Finance Committee, represents the Planning Board, represents citizens at large, that, you know, we're also members of the community tasked with trying to move forward. I think that any responsible person, um, in the, with the, with the role that we have would come to the town with what's being proposed. Uh, again, I recognize and respect that, um, that there are views out there that question if this is the best location. Uh, I've heard the comments about parking, I'm, or driving, I'm not sure if this year is a good example of traffic at the schools, but most uses in the community section of the building would be used at evening when schools are closed. Uh, the school portion of the building, which would be a before-school and after-school program for parents, uh, that's two-thirds of the building that will be used after-school hours. And when we look at the foot traffic that goes into town hall every day, and the foot traffic that goes into, uh, the Ritter Building every day, and, and T, and the current TCP, because right now we have, you know, three town halls. I think that what we realize is that that traffic will be significantly lower than any future school on that site. Um, you know, there are real questions that everyone in our community should have when it comes to spending a lot of money on buildings. I think that the committee has, has labored on this for the last two years to get to this point. Uh, and that the point that they're at, whether you agree with it or not, uh, Selectmen Adams, but the point that we are at is recognizing that it's difficult to ask the town to proceed forward. And so we're, we're asking for, uh, permission to pursue another option. My expectation is that town hall will hear our presentation, uh, that they will have the chance to ask questions about that presentation, that they, it will be very clear as to why this article is being proposed. And then the, the good citizens of our town who two years ago asked us to look into this, they will have the opportunity to revise that or not. Uh, and I, I hope that we can make a compelling argument for why it should be revised, but I think we all work at the pleasure of our, we all serve at the pleasure of our neighbors. Uh, and so I, you know, reasonable people can disagree.
Ms. Adams?
Okay, I just wanted to respond to something. I can't help but take the legal nuances of, um, town government very seriously, I can't help it, it's just the way I, I process things. And, um, what was just said was that as a member of the TCP BDC or the Building Design Committee, we were tasked with moving forward. That was not the charge of this group. So to say we were tasked with moving forward, very specifically, this group was formed to come up with a price for the redesign of the TC Passios building. That is why it's called the TC Passios Building Design Committee. And the charge was to come up with a price analysis of using that building as a multi-use, community-use town hall space, um, with shared, shared with the schools. And so to, to say things like a group was tasked with moving forward, I think is very unfair, that very clearly was not a task given to that group of individuals. Um, and, um, I think the task of moving forward, um, be, belongs back on the drawing board, um, and, and perhaps, you know, there's just, what we maybe needed was a, a town hall committee, and like I said, I would support renovating or working on Turkey Hill prior to town hall. At this point, town hall's not completely open, the schools are. Um, so, um, but, but we've gotta be very clear with this group, it's, it's, there's a lot of moving pieces here and a ton of money. And, um, that group, as far as I know, when we set it up, um, was not tasked with, with moving any specific agenda forward, they were tasked with coming up with a price.
Well, I wanna be careful that we're not saying move an agenda forward. I think that what we are doing right now, and this is my interpretation, isn't working. I think that most people in town will agree that it's not working. Uh, you know, and, and so if I translate that as moving forward, I think that talking with the citizens, the, the residents in our town, the employees of our town, I think what we're doing, again, anything is better than what we're currently at. And so maybe I translate that as moving forward, but I think we are all aware of the charge of the committee of looking at, you know, consolidating school, community and, and town offices into the TCP building. I think we're, we're all fully aware of that.
Mr. Dwyer?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I just wanna chime in and say, you know, we're, we're gonna receive the report from the committee, uh, for Article twenty-five, so they're gonna let us know. Uh, as we've discussed in previous meetings, the number came in, uh, higher than anticipated. So it's very reasonable for, uh, based on that new information to, uh, walk and chew gum at the same time to say, okay, here's new information, mate, uh, let's make some decisions and, and present to the town some things that, um, give us an additional options to further evaluate whether or not the TCP redesign or, or, uh, you know, a, a new building on the site is valid. We're not making decisions whether we're, we're gonna move forward, we're trying to get the town more information so that citizens can make decisions. And, and I, I just don't see the reason to be against that.
I guess it's just more money spent, um, and spending it on researching that location at some, at some point where we've, we've bled a lot of money into, to studying, and I, like I've said in a previous meeting, we can think out a good location without spending money, and and right there in the congestion of school campus, I can tell you is not our best possible location. We have an abandoned two-and-a-half acres that can easily accommodate a town green and a town hall, because it used to accommodate a school, recess, soccer games, and a public safety building. We have a beautiful parcel in town center that's nothing but abandoned and shabby. And if we're spending engineering money, um, and, uh, we also have architectural preservation district issues, the fact that we're not pivoting to look at a two-and-a-half acre parcel right in the heart of the historic center, eh, we could pivot for free and then start to apply our money to something that makes a lot more sense. A town that has a, basically a vacant lot and a vibrant school campus, putting town hall on the vibrant school campus when it has a vacant lot is something that I don't understand on any level. It's, it's just, it almost, I, I almost can't even like, I lose sleep over things like this. We have a vibrant school campus and a vacant lot. And we're gonna do engineering and design studies, more money on doing maybe a fifty thousand square foot new building for town hall on a vibrant school campus when we have an abandoned vacant lot that's desperate for use. There's just comes a time where we have to stop, like, we're, we're spinning wheels in ways when there's such logical solutions and I, applying money, even if it's fifty-four thousand dollars, applying more money to studying a bad idea is a waste of everyone's money.
Well, first of all, the town didn't think it was a bad idea to consider reusing TC Passios, so therefore the idea that a town hall may be there is not anathema to what town meeting voted. So the fact that you don't like the location is not something that the town agreed with, because they said, okay, let's see if we can reuse that building. So they.
Town wanted to use the building, that's what we've talked about for years, the viability of using the building. If using the building is out the window, I've never heard people say that we must be at ten seventy-nine Mass Ave. I mean, I've never heard.
I didn't say anybody say must. What I'm saying is that the committee is coming to us saying that in their eyes, and they're gonna report the price, as you requested, they, they should, according to their charge, they're gonna report the price the article before. All I'm saying, and I don't wanna speak for Mr. Dwyer, but what I heard him say is that they're offering an alternative to keep the process going. It would be, and they have the vote, they should have the vote. They can certainly say, you know what, maybe they agree with you, maybe that fifty-four thousand dollars is not something we wanna invest. Maybe we start from square one, or maybe they say, you know what? I'm not, I wasn't against the town hall or a, or a mixed-use building being there with community and school uses. And that price is too much to rehab a fifty, sixty-year-old building. Let's look at fifty-four thousand dollars and see if that worth it. At least they'll have the decision. If we didn't put this article here, we'd be caught another six months doing nothing, nothing. This is what we're trying to avoid. Again, they don't have to go forward. The town meeting does not have to approve this. I personally will vote for it, because I think I wanna keep things moving forward and looking at options, and if Mr. Jeffries as, as a member of that committee says they're gonna look at things that could be relocatable to other properties, then I'm gonna take him at that face value, that that's what they're going to do, that whatever they come up with.
That's not in the article, there'll be no.
I didn't say it was in the article. I'm going on the charge of what the committee is promising they're going to do. Yes, they're gonna look at this property, but it's gonna be a building, according to Mr. Jeff, uh, Jeffries, that was discussed by the committee, that could be relocatable to another location with a different site if needed.
But the committee doesn't have the charge to be pursuing sites or anything, that's not why they were formed.
They're not gonna present different locations, they're gonna do a building that could be located, uh, when you do an architectural building of a home, that home can be put in different places. And yes, there's a little more additional site work depending on where you put it, but you can build the same home in multiple locations, that's all.
Right, but who's steering the ship? Because where's the charge and where's the group and who is in charge?
Yeah, I think it's about prudent, prudent process, that, you know, when you, when you have one parcel of land that's large, another parcel of land that's small, that it's, eh, you know, what you're doing is an overlay. And you say, hey, let's, let's do this overlay, let's try to fit it within this overlay. And either you can or you can't do that. Um, you know, based on the needs the community that came out, what the goals are, um, with that this building is looking to achieve, you know, as far as the needs of the community that is looking to meet, that, you know, we will know based on that building how much parking is needed, what other things that are needed. And again, it's, it's an over, you know, no one here on the TCP Design Committee, in fact, we very specifically are not trying to plan a building at the primary school. What we're trying to do is plan a building at the TCP current location that could be transferable to another place if the town so chose. Or at least we would have an, at least we would have an answer, but, you know, I, I think, you know, as, as a board, uh, as, if I can just comment for a second, you know, we're speaking to one another. I know that this is all when Cameron and people are, are watching us, but we're talking to one another about are we going to recommend this article for approval? And I, I don't see a benefit in arguing. So I'm in, I'm in favor of it, I think Mr. Dwyer's in favor of it, Mr. Alonso's in favor of it, you're opposed to it. Uh, I, I mean, I think that we're at a point where our conversation isn't advancing anyone else's opinion.
Well, I thought that's what discussion was, is discussing it.
Well, discussing, but I mean, there's a point where, where your, your, your views have been very consistent for two years. I mean, we, I think, I know where you stand on this.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I don't like when my opinions are projected by somebody else's analysis of them, so.
Um, we're, we're a board, Selectmen Adams, you know, I'm, we hear each other.
I think the point is, the point is that nobody on this commi, on this board is convincing anybody else of changing their position at this point.
That's, that's not my, my point is. I'm just trying, and I don't know if the town manager can step in with some of the legal nuance of it, but the TCP Building Design Committee was given a charge. And their charge was to present a price. So at some point, we as a board or something have to redefine the committee or redefine its charge. It is operating in a rogue way in such, it's, we think we should do a new building, we think we should this, we think we should that. And I think those are all great things to talk about, but I'm just going back to, like I said, I can't help but process the data very concretely. And the charge of that group is to present a price. And so at what point now does the group have the legal right to be outside of its charge? And whether I have an opinion or not, how do we get back on track so that the group is operating under an appropriate, um, purview?
The, the, the chart, they're operating, their, their charge to present a report and a price is coming at Article twenty-five. Uh, do you at least agree with that?
I absolutely agree with that.
Okay, okay.
Are they leading their own charge? That's.
They're not leading their own charge. They are coming to us, and we, as the Board of Selectmen, have put this on, submitted by them, but we approve what goes on the warrant, that they are making a suggestion that coming from this point, we believe it may be prudent to offer to town meeting this next Article twenty-six as our next charge. They are not leading that, they are offering a solution out of two years of their work to say, hey, in case, and we believe it's likely, that people don't like the price when they hear it, that this is another alternative. The town meeting cannot give us that charge, at which point they're done, right? Or they, they can say, hey, this is your new charge, do that. It's totally legal and totally within the scope of what we're asking them to do. They are not leading this, they are offering alternatives, they are offering suggestions for town meeting to take up and vote on. That's all they're doing. Town meeting gets the final vote on this. Okay, we're gonna come back to the recommendation of this article. I, I, I tend to agree with Mr. Jeffries, I think everybody has stated there, unless Mr. Marino, you wanna stay at your position, which you haven't weighed in on. Uh, and you're on no obligation if you don't want to. Uh, and you're on no obligation if you don't want to, but at that point, I think we're ready to vote on what our recommendation is going to be to town meeting. Okay.
Was there, was there a motion, Mr.?
There was no motion yet.
I moved to recommend approval of, of, um, is this Article 26?
Twenty-six.
Uh, I moved to recommend approval of Article 26.
Do I have a second? No second? So we're not going to recommend it?
I prefer to defer until after the presentation of Article 25.
Jim, where do you stand on this? Now I'm going to ask you to chime in here.
Okay. I'm, I'm rather confused about the whole situation, quite frankly. Uh, we already voted to defer it, didn't we?
Well, we voted to defer because we didn't have a number. Now we have a figure. We have a dollar amount. We didn't have a dollar amount till tonight.
Well, I, I don't honestly see what, I don't, I don't even see what the difference is. I agree with Todd. I think we should defer it till we, uh, see what happens to the previous article. I, I don't think it's, I don't think it's really necessary to, uh, decide whether or not we approve it.
Okay, we will defer. That was the last article that changed, right, Madam Town Manager?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion on the capital plan? Any discussion on the financial forecast? Any further discussion on any other annual town meeting warrant article? Okay. Old business number two, discussion on the consent calendar for the annual town meeting warrant articles. So what, what are the new revised list on the consent calendar?
So Articles eighteen and nineteen have been added to the consent calendar because they will be passed over. Me and Mina.
How many does that leave? How many are in the, the consent calendar at this point?
Yeah, I believe it is sixteen now.
Wow, more than half.
And Article thirty will be passed over as well, but by the petitioner.
Right. So we'll be out of there to have time for brunch.
I can hope.
Don't count.
I'm sorry?
I said, don't count on it.
I was just sending my wish up to the, uh, town meeting gods and goddesses. That's all. All right, Town Manager Report and COVID-19 Update.
Okay, I'll start with, uh, Town Manager Report. Now, it's been of existing vacancies. There is one vacancy in the Architectural Preservation District Commission. Four vacancies on the Bylaw Review Committee. Two vacancies as of, um, the upcoming July 1st on the Finance Committee. The, there is one vacancy on the Historical Commission, two vacancies in the Housing Authority. One vacancy on the TCP Building Design Committee. One vacancy on the Senior Workoff Program Committee and one associate vacancy on the Zoning Board of Appeals. Interested people that, uh, would like to submit an application can find it on the town website, complete them and return them to the Select Board's Office. Update on Facilities Management and Maintenance Software. The facilities, um, sorry, that should say the DPW Director chose a new facilities management and maintenance software called E-Mate that we will be transitioning to over the next couple of months. The software will be utilized for work orders, scheduling preventative maintenance and overall asset management that will inform the capital planning process for town facilities. First year's annual fee is being paid for through a grant through our insurance carrier. The Flat Hill Road Culvert, the DPW Director and I met with the engineering company that did the engineering and design work for the Flat Hill Road Culvert. And they notified us that the state is not reopening up applications for the Small Bridge Grant Program until later in fiscal year 2022. Due to the critical nature of repairing the culvert, we will be prepared to put this out to bid after town meeting in order to secure contractor by July 1st and begin with a culvert fabrication so that the project can be completed as soon as possible. This project is currently one of the top priorities in the Fiscal 22 Capital Plan that will be voted at town meeting. Pleasant Street Bridge over Pearl Brook. The DPW Director received the baseline schedule from the contractor and the preparatory work of putting up signage and preparing to close the bridge will start on May 25th. The schedule includes closing the bridge to traffic beginning on June 1st. Prior to closing, the DPW Director will put out a message on the DPW Facebook page, uh, to notify people. And this project is expected to be complete by mid-August. An update on the body worn cameras for the police department. The police chief has reported that the body worn cameras have been configured. And the next step is to get the officers trained on using them and then deploy them. The chief is hoping for deployment sometime in May. Once they are ready to be actively used, the chief will issue a message on their Facebook page to let everyone know the department will be using them. Home rule petitions for Jack's Country Variety and the Library Trust Fund Home Rule Petition. I reached out to our legislators to check on the status of the two home rule petitions that have not been signed into law yet. The Act to Authorize the Town to Grant an Additional License for the Sale of All Alcohol Beverages for Jack's Country Variety. And the Act to Authorize the Investment of Library Trust Funds by the Board of Trustees. These were refiled this session and have been assigned new bill numbers, which are HD 244 and HD 246 respectively. But they have not been assigned to committee yet. And our legislators have, uh, let me know that they'll keep updated on that status. And other meetings, events and announcements, the Finance Committee has meeting on Thursday, April 28th at 7:00 PM through Zoom. Sorry, that should be 29th. And the spring 2021 Yard Waste Days are the following Saturdays, 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. May 1st, May 8th, May 15th and May 22nd. For more information on Yard Waste Days, they can be found on the DPW page on the town website. And again, the annual town meeting is this Saturday, May 1st. Check-in begins at 8:00 AM and the meeting will start at 9:00 AM.
Any questions for the Town Manager on her report? If not, onward to COVID-19 Updates.
The Board of Health issued their weekly update and the cumulative laboratory confirmed number of cases in town as of April 23rd was 767. The state report showed 728 cases as of April 20th. There has been one death in town since the pandemic began related to COVID. This is an increase of 13 cases since April 16th. Updates from the state and federal government. The number of cases in Massachusetts as of April 22nd, there were 636,476 cases. Seventeen thousand, one hundred and sixty deaths and 20 million, 701,850 patients have been tested to date. Today, the administration announced their plans for continued reopening plan. And, um, the announcement included that they were open, reopen some outdoor Phase 2, Phase 4 Step 2 Industries effective May 10th and put plans in place for further reopening on May 29th and August 1st. The administration continues to take steps to reopen the Commonwealth's economy with public health metrics continuing to trend in a positive direction. This includes drops in average daily COVID cases and hospitalizations. Massachusetts remains first in the nation for first vaccine doses and total doses administered per capita among states with more than five million people. The administration will also relax the face coverings order for some outdoor settings effective April 30th. Included in the Phase 4 Step 2 Industries and Gatherings Changes is loosened restrictions in advance from Step 1 of Phase 4. Um, because the cases, case rates have dropped by 20%. And the positivity rate has dropped to the lowest levels recorded since last summer. So effective Monday, May 10th, large venues such as indoor and outdoor stadiums, arenas, ballparks are currently open as part of Phase 4 at a 12% will be permitted to increase their capacity to 25%. The Commonwealth will reopen some outdoor Phase 4 Step 2 Industries, including amusement parks, theme parks, outdoor water parks. Um, that will be permitted to operate at a 50% capacity after submitting plans to the Department of Public Health. Road races and other large outdoor organized amateur or professional group athletic events will be permitted to take place. The staggered starts after submitting safety plans to a local Board of Health or the DPH. Youth and adult amateur sports tournaments will be allowed for moderate and high risk sports. Singing will also be permitted indoors with strict distancing requirements at performance venues, restaurants, event venues and other businesses. Effective May 29th, subject to public health and vaccination data, gathering limits will increase to 200 people indoors and 250 people outdoors for event venues, public settings and private settings. Subject to public health and vaccination data, additional Phase 4 Step 2 Industries will be permitted to open, including street festivals, parades and agricultural festivals at 50% of their previous capacity. And after submitting safety plans to the local Board of Health. Bars, beer gardens, breweries, wineries and distilleries will be subject to restaurant rules with seated service only, a 90 minute limit and no dance floors. Subject to public health and vaccination data, the restaurant guidance will be updated to eliminate the requirement that food be served with alcohol and to increase the maximum table size to 10. Effective August 1st, subject to public health and vaccination data, remaining industries will be permitted to open, including dance clubs and nightclubs, saunas, hot tubs, steam rooms at fitness, fitness centers, health clubs and other facilities, indoor water parks and ball pits. All industry restrictions will be lifted at that time and capacity will increase to 100% for all industries. With businesses encouraged to continue following best practices, the gathering limit will be rescinded. Depending on vaccine distribution and public health data, the administration may consider reevaluating the August 1st date. The public, Department of Public Health will also continue to issue guidance as needed, including guidance to still require masks indoors. The face coverings order, effective April 30th. The face coverings order will be relaxed for some outdoor settings. Face coverings will only be required outside in public when it is not possible to socially distance and at other times required by sector specific guidance. Face coverings will still be required at all times in indoor public spaces. Face coverings will also continue to be required at all times at events, whether held indoors or outdoors and whether held in a public space or a private home, except when eating or drinking. At smaller gatherings and private homes, face coverings are recommended but not required. The $300 fine as an enforcement mechanism will be eliminated. Update on vaccines. As of Monday, April 19th, individuals 16 or and older became eligible to receive a vaccine at any um, of the Commonwealth's over 300 public vaccination locations. With this group, 1.7 million additional residents are now eligible for vaccine in the Commonwealth. Individuals seeking appointments at mass vaccination sites are able to pre-register for vaccine appointments at mass.gov COVID vaccine. Several regional collaboratives are also on the pre-registration system. All individuals who pre-register can still seek appointments at other sites, including pharmacies, community health centers or their healthcare provider. Due to the limited supply of vaccines from the federal government, individuals seeking appointments should anticipate that it may take several weeks to get an appointment. As of April 18th, the Commonwealth hit a milestone of having over 2 million residents fully vaccinated. Over 3.2 million first doses have been administered to date. As far as dose allocation in Massachusetts. Last week, the state received 348,220 first and second doses as part of the state allocation. Uh, these figures do not include doses provided directly from the federal government to the federal retail pharmacy program. Federally qualified health centers or community vaccination center. This week, first dose and second dose state allocations were distributed among providers as follows. Health systems and healthcare providers excluding community health centers was 122,040. Regional collaboratives and local boards of health, 76,360. Mass vex, vaccination locations, 122,040. Community health centers, state allocation only was 21,180. Retail pharmacies, non-CVS, state allocation was 4,500. And mobile clinics supporting long-term care facilities, congregate care, affordable, low-income senior housing and homebound individuals was 1,900. Weekly allocations are subject to change based on federal availability, demand from providers and obligations to meet second doses. Providers have 10 days to use their doses and must meet specific performance schedules, thresholds. Federal doses, in addition to the state allocation, the federal government has increased its distribution of vaccines to CVS health sites as part of the federal retail pharmacy partnership, as well as certain Massachusetts federally qualified community health centers. These quantities fluctuate on a weekly basis and are not counted as part of the state's weekly allocation, but represent an increasing allocation to selected locations. Last week, 119,410 first and second doses were allocated to the retail pharmacy program. Federally qualified health centers received 69,530 doses directly from the federal government. And the mass vaccination site at the Heinz Convention Center, which is run in partnership with FEMA, was allocated 42,120 doses. Um, I did, uh, with Chairman Alonso at the beginning of the meeting. I do expect that we will fully open next week during hours. Um, and I just want to add to that from the last conversation. Um, that we have for majority of the time been open from 10 to 2. And outside of that, by appointment only, which we've never, um, declined anyone from coming into the town hall if they've needed to come in outside of those hours. Um, which all our considerations have been following the state guidance. Um, the, the metrics, just like the state does, if our cases increased in town, that was definitely a consideration. So to take into consideration the, the safety of both the residents and our employees. Um, so that's all been part of our consideration. So I think the school is definitely under different circumstances. They were mandated by the state to reopen, um, on, uh, depending on whether they were already running a hybrid model or fully remove that schedule. Um, which I think is, it's all, um, a consideration that everyone has to take into account, um, we're looking at it. So it's, um, a different comparison.
Anybody have any questions for the Town Manager on that update?
No, I just think the tiered process of bringing things back matches, um, some of my germophobic thoughts of the past, like the fact that ball pits haven't come back yet. I remember one time a child of mine made it into one. And it, uh, so it's funny, but as things are, are allowed back in, these things like ball pits, which I think is funny, keeps coming up, um, being, being left out, it sort of is in line with, with, uh, I guess what you would imagine, no ball pits or saunas.
Okay, uh, upcoming meeting schedule. So for the third time this meeting, if you haven't already heard, there's an annual town meeting on May 1st. I would recommend you drop everything that you're doing and everything you have planned on Saturday and being there. It's a, it's a big, uh, Democracy Palooza, and so it only is once a year, so please attend. And then our next meeting is May 4th. And then our next meeting is May fourth, uh, at which point we will go over the town manager, well, it'll be introduced into public record, the Town Manager Composite Evaluation. That, of course, is, if I get everybody's evaluation to me, so I can actually do that. And then we're on a normal schedule back to then. Uh, okay, so public comment from the public. Mr. Menard.
Hi, can you hear me?
You can.
I, Chris Menard, six seventy-two Page Street. Um, I'm also a member of the Finance Committee, but I am speaking, uh, just as a, uh, just as myself. Um, I, I do have a little bit of problem with the process related to the TC Passios, um, article, and it kind of comes down to the charter and the powers granted to the Finance Committee. And I want to read these, um, to you so you can kind of see where I'm coming from. So the Finance Committee shall have the primary responsibility to report to town meeting on the proposed budget of the Town Manager and all warrant articles having a fiscal impact on the town as more particularly detailed in the Charter, town bylaws, and the laws of the Commonwealth. Before preparing its final recommendation, the Finance Committee shall hold one or more public hearings to permit public discussion on the subject matter of the articles contained in the warrant. So we do have a meeting that was scheduled for Thursday. It's not a public, um, it's, it's not for public, it's not a public, uh, hearing. Um, I think the subject of this article is not necessarily just the charge associated with the, the TC Passios Building Committee, but it's also the value, um, that goes associated with the, the warrant article. In dropping this four days before town meeting, um, not having a public comment on the, the amount of money is really, I think, bypassing the spirit, if not the letter of the, the law, related to our charter. I think this is bad precedent. Um, I feel like we did a very similar thing on the TIF agreement back in the, um, the, the fall special town meeting. And I, I think this article in particular, even if it's just the fifty-four thousand dollar, does set in motion something that's, um, has a huge fiscal impact on the town. Namely, we, we're faced with, um, relocating town, um, offices. We're faced with a, a, um, Turkey Hill School building project of some sort in the future. Um, it was reported to us this past year, significant infrastructure projects down the Pike on bridges and culverts. We're already seeing some of those pop up. We are in a good fiscal situation right now, but I think if, it could spiral a lot of control if we don't take the time on these things. So I would urge that we do take the time between, that we do not, that we pull this article on the floor because it's not, in my mind, um, been properly served. Um, there has been no, um, public hearing on it for the value, and we, we really aim it towards the November town meeting. Um, I also feel, and I said this at the last, uh, Finance Committee meeting, I think the Finance Committee, along with the Board of Selectmen and, and perhaps, um, other town bodies, need to come forward with a budget that we propose associated with this project, saying, you know, we would like you to design a building that accommodates as much as possible for X amount of dollars and do the same thing for, for, for Turkey Hill. And additionally, factor into that, you know, these other capital projects that are on, on a horizon, most notably infrastructure. Infrastructure, as we know, is, is something that could, could really devastate us as well, so. So that's my comment. Um, I don't know if, if there's a legal reading on this that could be made before Thursday. Um, but I will also bring this up on, on Thursday at the Finance Committee, so, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment from the public? Seeing none. Okay, any public comment from the board? Mr. Jeffries.
Yeah, I have a public comment tonight, and, and it's literally for the public. Uh, so this is for the people at home who are watching, um, watching us today or will be watching us on, on repeat. So we are currently in an election cycle, um, and most seats are uncontested, but there is one contested seat. You know, when we step up to serve on these boards, you know, it's challenging. This is a difficult, I will say, being a selectman is not an easy job. Um, and, and it's healthy for there to be a competitive race. There was a lot of discussion over this past weekend that attacked, in my opinion, a member of this board. And whether you support, um, you know, agree with a member of this board or not, I think we all have a responsibility as citizens of our community to maintain a level of respect. You know, you saw tonight that Selectman Adams and I disagreed. But I'll tell you, Selectman Adams and I, when we see each other at the grocery store, at town hall, we are very respectful and polite um, with one another. We have good conversations. And I think it's a real disservice to our community to go to Facebook and tear a public official down. Now, you don't have to agree with all of, of our opinions and views. Um, certainly, we're here, we're, we're subject to whatever public scrutiny is given. But I urge, as we go through this election process, for there to be a, a, a higher level of respect uh, for the fact that people are volunteering to step up and serve. And I encourage us to all keep this an issues-focused campaign where we are not attacking one another, we're not attacking other members of this board, um, and that we let the candidates who are seeking public office explain to the community why they are the best candidate. Uh, so again, we, certainly everyone at home is free to do what they want, but I know for sure that regardless as to who I will support or not, what I will not do is go to social media and tear down any member of this board or any other board um, of people who voluntarily step up and serve our community. Thanks.
Any other public comment from the board, Ms. Adams?
Sure, I'll follow up and say the grocery store story, absolutely true. It's a fabulous place to see people during COVID, and just a couple months ago, it was like, oh, holy smokes. And, you know, you do miss those little, uh, moments before and after meetings where you get to talk about real life with people. And so, no, that's a true story. We, we certainly, you know, have our differences. Um, but, but it is nice to, to keep that, that mindset that we're all here, um, volunteering time, truly volunteering a lot of time, so. Thank you.
Uh, I will just, I have one comment that I just want to say. I joked tonight about three times about coming to town meeting, using every kind of marketing and sideshow antique I can get to people to come. But, no, if you follow these and you followed even the discussion tonight and previous discussions, the public comment tonight, the Finance Committee meetings, all the meetings that people go through, what happens in the direction that this town takes and what we choose to fund and not fund, that's where it all happens. It happens at town meeting. So I encourage people, if you have an interest about how dollars get spent and what it gets spent on, and to be able to voice your opinion about the direction the town should go. I mean, other people are going to be doing the same. Only then can we really know as a town what the majority of people know. And it's really a little bit disconcerting sometimes when we barely have a quorum and, and a town of eleven thousand gets decided by seventy people who decide that this is their civic responsibility. So I hope we can encourage more people to come to participate because that's how we get a clearer view about what goes on in town. And without anybody showing up, you know what happens? Nothing. So, uh, please, I do encourage people to take an interest in what goes on and how, how things proceed in town. That being said, uh, we have an executive session to enter into. We will not be returning to open session, so we will end this Zoom at the time of the adjournment of this meeting, go into executive session, and the motion is to enter into executive session to adjourn after exiting executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty, Section Twenty-One, Paragraph Three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and the Chair so declares. This is to regards to the Municipal Employees Union, the DPW Union, and the Fire Union.
You're gonna go, it's so moved on that one.
All right, excellent, good choice. We have a second.
Second.
Uh, all those in favor, Mr. Jeffries?
Aye.
Mr. Marino?
Aye.
Mr. Dwyer?
Aye.
Ms. Adams?
Aye.
And an aye for me. Good night, everyone. Hope to see you at town meeting. Until then, take care of yourselves, take care of each other. Good night.
Good night.
Good night.